...by the Minister of National Security, followed by the Commissioner of Police. But before we proceed, it's important that I establish some protocols and to give you some points of note. To your left are the restrooms. Tonight, this evening, will be livestreamed. Comments can be made on the government Facebook page if people wish to ask questions or make any comments. This event is being recorded. So if you speak into the mic but don't want to be part of the recording later on, see me later and they'll have your piece of that recording eliminated. Tonight's discussion should be around solutions because anybody can identify problems. Hopefully, you've come here to offer your comments with a view to solutions for what's afflicting our country today. There are mics available on either side and we have staff here who will be... If you wish to speak, please indicate by raising your hand and one of our staff members will bring a mic to you so you don't have to parade up and down the aisle. When speaking tonight, please be respectful, particularly since you're all here for the benefit of our country and particularly since we are all gathered in the house of the Lord. So let's show some respect. Your questions and comments should be succinct as possible, somewhere between two to three minutes. I reserve the right to latch on if you're making valid points or to cut you off if you're not. Just be mindful of time. We're trying to be out of here by midnight. I have to be back... I have to be back dancing to it before midnight. So be mindful of time. And before we proceed any further, I want to thank Reverend Tweed for the use of St. Paul's Centennial Hall. Thank you very much, my brother, for your kind hospitality. Having said all that and hopefully laying the groundwork for tonight's discussion, I now invite His Excellency the Governor to make his remarks, followed by Minister Weeks, followed by the Commissioner of Police. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. It's... Thank you all for being here this evening. And I'd like to echo the thanks to St. Paul's for making available their facility this evening. Now, as you'll probably guess, it's my first town hall in Bermuda. It's also, as I understand, not particularly... Okay.
There we go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So as you'll gather, it's my first town hall and I understand it's not particularly usual for governors to do town halls. But you'll realize, obviously, is a issue before us today has been outlined, one of gun violence and gang violence. It does fall under the Constitution to be the responsibility of the governor, obviously in partnership with the government and also the police. So my view is it's right for me to be here. We're all responsible, you'll see along the table, for these issues and as such, I think it's important for all of us to be able to inform you, which is my first objective of the town hall this evening on what's happening and what's being done about it, to allow you the opportunity to ask those responsible questions and thirdly, to listen to your views and ideas. And I really want to emphasize the third one of those. As much as you probably like to fill the time between here and midnight with presentations, you'd be glad to know I don't have a PowerPoint, although I'm sure that yours is excellent, Commissioner. You know, presentations are great, but we want to leave plenty of time for questions and comments. So as I said, it's nine months since I've arrived in Bermuda and I've used that time as much as I can to get out and about, to talk to people on various issues, including policing and internal security. It's a long conversation. Obviously, many of you have spent all your lives here. You've lived it. And so part of my objective tonight is to listen and learn. But I'm in a position to talk to a lot of people and bring them together. And just this month, we had two governors' councils. So that's an opportunity to bring together the Premier and Ministers, in this case, the Commissioner of Police, Director of Public Prosecution and the Collector of Customs. And we held two meetings this month. And one of the takeaways from that, and I can give you my honest reassurance, is a shared and collective position. The status quo in terms of response is not enough. The resources that are necessary to respond to the problem will be made available. And the resolution of the response is one of a system. And we'll get on to that. Policing... You can't police yourself out of this issue. It requires issues at the beginning, preventative, policing and accountability and social justice in terms of the corrective system too. But it's a whole systems approach. We're going to focus perhaps on policing tonight, but rest assured, there are other parts of the conversation which are equally important. But after nine months, what are my reflections? I've got many, but I'm just going to share seven at high level. This is no... By no means all my views and I'm going to be brief. So the first one, and some of this is not going to come as a surprise. In my view, the BPS is too small. It needs to increase in size and capability at pace. I think that's a shared understanding. You'll probably hear from the Commissioner too. And you'll also hear what's being done to rectify that at pace. The second issue, I think the BPS needs to modernize and enhance some of its equipment, particularly in regards to its investigative capacity and surveillance. That is recognized and is also... There is action being done on that. You should hear more about it from the Commissioner or the Minister or both. In my view, there needs to be a strategic assessment on the capability and size of the whole law enforcement agencies in Bermuda. That has been agreed and you'll have seen that in the throne speech, something called a Strategic Security and Defense Review. Sounds like a little bit of paper, but it's actually quite important. The last one was 2014, some time ago. And what that's designed to do is to look at essentially all the risks in Bermuda, particularly security. Look at what's being done about them, where the gaps are and what needs to be done about it in a strategic way. So across the board, every part of the service is responding to security. So Coast Guard, Regiment, Corrections, Customs, everyone. And that process is starting in terms of the design of it and my view is it will be reporting it next year. That gives a long-term response and obviously, there's short-term responses which you'll hear about. But it's important to know that the direction of travel is in the right one. And that, I should emphasize, is very much not a governor's thing, but this is very much a partnership with government and all those responsible. The other issue, and I alluded to, was one of prevention. You can't, as I said, police your way out of it. Policing is very important. Prevention is equally if more important. So one is a reactive response to what we're seeing in our streets. The other one is to stop it happening in the first place. This is not a new activity. It may feel particularly acute at the moment and the incidents over the last few months are completely shocking. But as you'll hear from the Commissioner, this is not a new problem if you look back over the years and time... And that might be troubling, but it's true. In terms of the violence, it might be evolving. Those who are perpetrating are changing and it's an evolution. But it's not new. So it is a... An issue that needs, again, a look at what are the root causes. The root causes now, historically, and that is a whole-of-country response. And that's set out in the National Violence Reduction Strategy and I'm sure the Minister will be talking about that. It's a good strategy. And I know people always criticize strategies that, you know, words on a page. Implementation is obviously key, but you've got to start from somewhere and have a clear direction of where you're going. The strategy is a great place to start. And my last point is, and I've talked to a lot of people, it's about improving the trust in the police and maybe trust in authorities more generally. It's clear from what I hear that there are historical issues. It's not unfamiliar to frankly, most Western societies in terms of communicating and trusting the police with what you have to say, what you've seen, what you've heard. But if you're the police trying to make a response to it, it's really, really difficult unless the community talks to you and shares what information that you have. It's really difficult for prosecutors to bring those to account who have perpetrated these crimes. They need evidence, they need witnesses. Now, I'm very interested. There are issues and that we're looked at in terms of how to improve trust in police, what are the options in terms of where you can pass information to authorities directly, indirectly? But I'm very interested in your ideas in terms of how do you share what you know to those in authority so they can take the appropriate response? Because being no doubt, and I'm sure you'll accept this, this is a national, community-wide response that required. You cannot just point to the police for response. So ideas on that would be very welcome, as well as those, of course, and you'll hear from the Commissioner about what he's doing to restore trust in the police in terms of what you can deal and expect with his officers. Now, that's enough for me. I'm going to pass on to the Minister for his remarks and I'm very much looking forward to your questions and comments and ideas in discussion. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me at your back? Yes? I'd like to acknowledge St. Paul's Church for hosting this event. I want to acknowledge all the community leaders for coming here tonight, families of lost loved ones and community activists that really want to see something done. It really warms me hard to see such a full house tonight. This is the start. This hopefully is the start of more interaction, more communication and more solutions. But tonight is about solutions, collaboration and charting a safer path forward for all of us. I like the diversity that I see, men, women, young, old, black and white. This is the one Bermuda that we all talk about. Firearms incidents in Bermuda, as we know, have become all too common. Knife crimes are only rise more so this year than in years past among our young men in particular. Gang activity, while not on the same as larger countries, but for a small island like Bermuda, it is definitely out of control. Our loss of young ones is horrifying. It's heartbreaking. And tonight, we have families living in fear, people afraid to go out at night, no longer be able to leave doors open or take those late-night walks. These are the kinds of responses that we need if we're going to come up with a community solution. The Governor talked about strengthening community policing to build trust. Yes, we have been going on for the last year, year and a half in trying to increase the Bermuda Police Service. I have talked about in the media for quite some time that we've had difficulty in filling the ranks of the Bermuda Police Service with local-born men and women. So what our strategy was, after we reached out to Bermidians, we had to reach out to resident non-Bermidians and we are still having difficulty filling those ranks. So a part of the conversation that we got to have, not just tonight, but in our communities, at our kitchen tables or wherever we meet to congregate, at the bar, wherever, is that we're going to have to look overseas to help fill our ranks of the Bermuda Police Service. We have been talking about stronger legislation. The Bermuda Police Service, along with the Governor of Bermuda, are looking at ways to strengthen our legislation and to enforce the legislation that we already have on the books and how we can go about amending legislation where need be for further legislation to help us combat the scourge that we are currently experiencing. Two, we've also increased our technology, IE CCTV. We are pretty well up and running. There are still some, a few cameras that still have to come online. So I'm just giving some outline as to what this government has been doing in conjunction, in collaboration with the Bermuda Police Service. Youth engagement. We have expanded our youth programs. We have a part of our department, the Game Bar Introduction Team. They're very much into the primary schools, the middle schools and the high schools. This tonight may focus on enforcement, but I want everyone to know that this government is racking on prevention. How can we save those that are not yet a part of that number of the young, the small percentage that have engaged in an untoward activity? There's a lot of other points that I have here that I may touch on while we have the question and answer. I'm session, but before I... My seat. I implore everyone out there who is a parent, a godparent, a brother, a sister, boyfriend, a girlfriend. We have to know what our children are doing. Peace is not going to do it for you. It starts in your home. We must know what our children are doing. We cannot ignore the red flags. We know what our children look like. We could... I could stand here and one of my children wore a cross therefore above my glass and I can't see too far, but I could be there to say, "That's my boy." Or "That's my daughter." So what I'm trying to say is that we must all engage in this. We must all engage in it. And those red flags that we talk about, don't be afraid to cry for help. Don't be afraid to say, "Yes, I need assistance." A part of our national strategy is actually parenting classes. You know, we have classrooms, everything else. But we have parenting classes as a part of our national strategy. And I'm in church tonight, but I even have to challenge the clergy. Tractors too have to do their job. I came up at a time and other than her, tractors where I got a lot of foundation. And we have to get our pastors out there on the street. This is not a criticism of anyone. I'm just trying to point out that we as a community have to do this together and every part, every piece of the community has a part to play. Our sporting clubs, our community clubs. We now are offering restorative justice classes to club executives. So we are trying every part, every avenue that we can put in place to address this. Enforcement is what is topical right now, is front and center. But a part of this Bermuda government is to address the issue on more than one front. And prevention, getting those youngsters that we can get now is a major focus. And that's where it comes to you, the parent, you, the community. Each one of us, reach out to somebody. Reach out to somebody of these young guys. We know, I mean, a lot of times we talk over the years now. I reached a milestone and now I'm a senior. But I'm saying that to say... I'm saying that to say that over the years, you know, I've had my share of experiences and we have all seen a little Johnny run around and we talk, "Hey, some little Johnny. We need to do something to help him." But what happens here is we stop at the kitchen table. But that little Johnny becomes 21. Then somebody can turn around and say, "Yeah, I knew here's going to be a pain and you know what, when he is three. It's time for us to take part in our community safety." So with those few words, I will save the rest of my comments for the questions that I ask. Thank you.
Your Excellency Minister, thank you very much. Good evening. It would be absolutely remiss of me not to start this evening by just throwing up a photograph. We are missing a 15-year-old woman. Now, normally, she's been missing since the 17th of September. I appreciate that's how we came out here for what it's been to me. We've been missing... She's been missing since the 17th of September and normally in the police, we get little signs of, "Oh, she's here. Oh, she's there. Oh, they're here." And obviously, before either. We have just not had that level of information and we are truly concerned. Take this picture. Speak to your friends. And let's do everything we can to locate her and to keep information coming in about, you know, where she may be located. So I just wanted to start there today. The number one thing, the number one reason why Bermuda Police Service exists is to save lives. All right, so this evening, the question that I often get is, things are going wrong. Things are not trending in the direction we want to. What are the police doing? Okay? So very sharply focused in terms of operational response is really what I wanted to start with because you may not see it and you may not know it. So following the recent murders, we've stood up what we call Operational Sentinel, right? So this is a targeted effort around gang members and the highest harm causes in our community, largely around gangs. This operation is headed by an Assistant Commissioner of Crime. One of the things is that we are absolutely using all legal avenues that we can to target gang nominals. So we're looking at the intelligence that we gather. So we have an entire system that is in the background. You don't see it, but we are out there gathering intelligence about the community, about gang members, their activity, where they live, who their girlfriends are, what vehicles they drive. All that kinds of stuff, we have a machine that's around that. But one of the points that I make is that when the community shares us information, that is some of the best intelligence that we get when members of the community says, "I see something suspicious over here." Or, you know, sometimes it's much more specific where an individual is giving us information about somebody has committed a crime. We have drawn resources across the various units. So in other words, we're kind of short-staffed, but clearly, this is a priority. So we've taken investigators from normal criminal investigation departments. We've taken people from the watches to pull together to have a team of individuals whom every single time they come to work, they are targeting gang members. And this is the proactive work that I'm talking about in addition to the investigations that are going on. We meet daily to provide officers that are... The ones you just see sort of driving around in vehicles, we meet daily to ensure that they are properly tasked. And in addition to our armed firearms officers, the ones who carry firearms as part of their routine. And we meet daily to review what it is that we've done. All right. Can you advance, please? All right. So you've heard the name or the term 315F. This is a very powerful tool in our arsenal to... What it allows the police to do is to stop and search in anticipation of violence. And what that means for us is that as we're out on patrol, when we see individuals, we are allowed to... And they're in a particular place that we've designated as part of the 315F, to stop those individuals and where necessary, search them. Now, we are not, or we try not to be absolutely indiscriminate on that. We know, for example, two up on a bike, all dressed in black, at any moment, at any time during the day. And in our world, we call that a clue. So we will be focusing our energies in individuals that we either know to be gang members or are just fitting a profile, which is what we've seen when individuals are doing, you know, committing serious crimes. So we've really increased our 315F engagements and that has resulted in the seizure of a number of bladed articles in particular. And since September the 16th, we have made 108 arrests, which is quite a number of arrests. So since September the 16th, as a result of 315F, as a result of search warrants, as a result of stops on the streets, we've arrested 108 people. And we're focusing primarily on targeting gang nominals. We've executed a number of search warrants and it hasn't made the news, so you're hearing it first here. But we have recovered, let's just say, over the past week, we've recovered two firearms and made an arrest of an individual in connection with those firearms. We made a number of seizures around controlled drugs and equipment, seized firearms and seizure of CAS, which actually, the CAS part represents a little bit of a step change. So when I say we're looking at all the avenues that we can to target nominals, one of the things that we see is people wearing very expensive jewelry. I mean, $20,000, $30,000 in gold around their neck that we are confident they don't have a job that supports that. So that allows us another avenue to target these individuals, seize that and ask them to explain how it is they were able to afford this when there's no sign of a job. When we ask them where they work, they're not able to answer that question in a meaningful way. The other thing that we do a fair bit of is traffic enforcement, targeted traffic enforcement. So we know the routes where gang members would routinely travel and we will set up traffic enforcement in those locations. Stop and search, so we might do 100 stop and searches and the reality is, at the end of those stop and searches, maybe 10 out of the 100 result in actionable items, right? It has a strong deterrent value, but the ratio of ongoing enforcement to the amount of people stopped is kind of low. Every single time we do traffic enforcement, somebody walks away with ongoing levels of enforcement and allows us to get control and to deter individuals. Because you may not know this, but often, gang-connected individuals don't pay their fines. Often, gang-connected individuals don't bother to go to court. And that means warrants come out and it just gives us a little bit more opportunities to gain control and disrupt individuals. You will have seen, if you're in the city, you will have seen increased patrols in the North Hamilton area and community engagement in particular. Now, our numbers are down and our ability to long-term sustain that is going to be a challenge. I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing to try and increase our numbers, but you would have seen, just based on the community feedback that I'm getting, you have seen that there's been an increase in the patrols and the amount of officers we have in North Hamilton. Arrests for bladed articles are on the significant increase. And I'm going to eventually get to a slide, which is for me, raising some significant concerns about people's attitudes towards the use of violence and particularly represented by people carrying knives, right? It's on the absolute rise. So that's a little bit about the local response in terms of what we're doing. One of the things also heard in the news... Okay, I'm going the wrong direction. Okay, right. One of the things you've also heard from the news is that we're looking for some overseas assistance. Now, primarily, that overseas assistance is gonna come in the form of any police investigator. So you would have heard recently, for example, there are, you know, going back a long period of time, there are forty-three unsolved murders, which is a lot, right? I think you might probably be surprised that there's about eight detectives whose primary role is investigating that. In other jurisdictions, a single, what we call Category A murder, could easily have fifty officers dedicated to that one investigation. And that's not concluding all the peripherals, like, you know, the uniform people that show up, the uniform people that are guarding the scene or doing some community reassurance patrols after that. We're talking about a team of around fifty investigators involved in investigating a single Cat, Category A murder. So we're gonna increase our detective units. We're also gonna increase the number of crime analysts. This is the ask. So we're asking basically in the UK to give us some CVs of people who can fulfill these roles for us. We're gonna increase our financial crime investigators. And this is short-term assistance while we look to grow those numbers from within the organization. The governor alluded to some covert equipment. We've got some real opportunities in increasing our ability to conduct covert surveillance. You could imagine that in a country as small as Bermuda, where we all see each other every day, covert surveillance is challenging, is absolutely challenging. But we get it done, but there's an opportunity for us to increase our technical and human capabilities around covert options. And I am also exploring, I'm gonna call a boots-on-the-ground option. So I am in conversations, very early days conversation with some of my overseas colleagues about a boots-on-the-ground response, so that we can very quickly raise our numbers. Okay, I'm just going to... Because I've got to try and hit as many things as I can quickly, in order to allow time for questions. So I'm gonna transition to CCTV. So I have, we had a CCTV town hall before, so I'm not gonna rehash all of that. Right now, there are about a hundred and thirty-six sites that are operational, which contributes to about four hundred and sixty views. Just back in the old day, that might just be cameras. So we've got about four hundred and sixty, for lack of a better word, cameras. One camera can have multiple lenses in it, but we're just saying cameras to keep it simple. When we are fully completed, we're gonna have around five hundred and sixty. So that is a massive increase beyond the previous iteration, when that was about a hundred and fifty cameras. There are, we have, this year alone, received three hundred and eighty-four requests for footage, that's internally and externally, and we've processed about three hundred and forty. A lot of, a lot, it definitely made the news when we talked about that the Court End and Donald Street cameras literally became operational right after the murder of Ms. Miners. That was planned, like, in other words, that, not, obviously, not those two events, but the scheduling of that camera coming on was, you know, planned. Tragically, it wasn't happening, it didn't happen before then. But what I want to tell you is that about, we captured significant elements of that event in twelve other sites and amounting to maybe nearly twenty-five minutes of material. So whilst we're talking about one, whilst a lot of news and coverage was about that one location, because we have four hundred and sixty views, we have meaningful information across the information. The point I really want to make is the camera systems are really coming online to be a key enabler in the fight against crime and bringing offenders to justice. We've got twelve license plate recognition cameras that are active. And when we're complete, we're gonna have about nineteen in total that are working. So those are the cameras that are in fixed locations. And as license plate, as cars or bikes go through them, we will be able to know that at a time and at a place that vehicle went through. We've got a planned speed enforcement of about thirty cameras that's also due to come online. Right, so I'm just going to canter through very quickly some other stats. We don't talk about it very much, I don't make a song and dance about that. But in terms of all crime, we are almost thirty percent below what we were in 2000 in all crime. And I fully appreciate, that doesn't mean anything to you, because what is in your mind is the violent crime. That's what preoccupies your minds. But the reality is, all crime is nearly fifty percent down from 2000. Here is a chart that I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on. Okay, I need to explain this a little bit. The blue line that you see is the amount of what we call confirmed firearms incidents. Now, I know you can't read the numbers, right? But the numbers start, the chart starts all the way on the left-hand side in 2006. And then the last year represented on the chart is 2024. You should see the bars, you're gonna see yellow and red. That is, the yellow bar is the amount of injuries, the red is going to be a fatality. So you can see the trend of injuries and fatalities in response to the number of firearms incidents. The line that I want to really draw your attention to is the green line. That is the numbers of bladed article injuries. So that's not possession, this is when a blade has been coming in contact with skin. Can you see that that line is just off the chart? It is going off the chart. And I've only stopped at 2024, just because I want to compare year over year, rather than a half a year, which could be misleading. So this is, you can see, we've been in a worser place before. When you look at the top of the line in 2010, where we nearly had fifty-five confirmed firearms incidents. And today, we, you know, we are lower. I will show you, I will illustrate another concerning trend. If you look at the gap between the bars, right, be them yellow or red, usually the tops are yellow, and the blue line. Where there is a gap, it means that the ratio of firearm incidents, so confirmed firearms incident, and a confirmed firearm incident is when we have shown up and we could see shell casings, or we can clearly see somebody injured. So it's not, hey, I heard a gunshot and we're counting that. There's forensic evidence to confirm that absolutely there was a firearms incident. When you can look at, which is about the middle of the page, okay, where there's a spike in about the middle of the page, that is 2016. So if you look at 2016 to the left, you're gonna see bigger gaps between the injuries and the amount of firearms incidents. And as we move forward to the right-hand side, you're gonna see that that gap is closer. What that means is, there are less firearm injuries and death relative to the incidents. In other words, it might have taken ten firearms incidents to get an injury. And I'm just making that number up, that's not the actual. It may have taken six, seven, eight, ten firearms incidents in order to get an injury. But now we are much lower. So when they are actually shooting, they are more likely hitting their target, causing injury or causing death. And I don't have 2025 because it's not a complete year. But actually, that blue line sits below the amount of injury and death. In other words, in 2025, it's the first time where the amount of injured or deceased individuals is actually higher than the number of firearms incidents. And some of you may recall that in recent years, we have had double homicides. That, for me, is very concerning. It's very concerning because the reality is, the people who are doing these things are getting better. In the intelligence world, we, in the beginning, back in 2010, let's just say, we know that individuals, it's right, it was like, okay, listen, tool up, team, we're gonna go, we're gonna go out ride, we're gonna go for a ride, right? They're gonna go and look for somebody, and they're just gonna look to find somebody. That's not the space we're in today. The space we're in today is they're planning and coordinating what they're doing. They know where we are, they are watching us. And the moment we are, because, you know, we're obviously patrolling in the area, we're doing what we can to disrupt and deter, they are watching us. And when we leave, they're coming in. There is information that they have, just like we collect that intelligence, they are collecting intelligence on their targets. They know where they are, they know that they're vulnerable at a particular time. And they're gathering that information to make sure that they are not wasting their efforts. That is a reality of the evolution of this situation. One of the points that I've always made to the community is, I was the head of intelligence back in 2012. And the people that I was chasing after then are not the people that I'm chasing after today. They are new people. New individuals have risen up and taken on this behavior. So when I speak to the community, my ask of the community and the National Violence Reduction Plan is a massive step in that direction, is we need to stop the, or minimize or change the conditions that allow for young people to evolve to this kind of state. We've arrested sixteen-year-olds for murder. Two years ago, that person was fourteen. Two years beyond that, they were twelve. What happens in the life of a twelve-year-old, a fourteen-year-old? That, and fortunately, it's a small handful. We've kind of said that we estimate there's about two hundred active gang members. But it's a small handful, but what can we do to change the conditions or make the conditions better, so the less of that is coming through? All right, just some other quick statistics, and I think I will kind of pause there. All right, so when, there are three hundred and seventy-nine officers in the organization today. Fifteen of those are in training school right now, so they're not out on the streets. I'm really grateful that mid-October, we're gonna receive boots-on-the-ground, an additional fifteen people. But you can understand that the number three hundred and seventy-nine is gonna remain the same. But there's fifteen that are, were not available to me. Come October, middle of October, they will be available. There were four hundred and eighty officers when I joined this organization. So pleasing is just gonna look differently. If I had a dollar for every person that said, we want to see you, we want to see you here, we want to see you there, we want to see there, I can't show you what I don't have, is the reality. When I talk to you about putting together Ops Sentinel, I've taken people from the Waches, I've taken people from doing other investigations, and I've put them together in a team. At a moment in time, there are people who are gonna start to say, hey, where is my investigation? What's happening with this? And my answer is gonna be, we've shifted priorities and had to, you know, focus on what is the most important. Some other quick things, since 2021, we've had sixty, actually, that number is gonna go up by seventy-one. Seventy-one firearms incidents, twenty of those have been fatal, thirty-five of those involving injuries. The real big one is a hundred and six stabbings since 2021. Ten are fatalities and a hundred and seven injuries. And we're not talking scrapes here. We're talking stabbed and there's broken bones, we're talking stabbed in the back of the neck. I mean, we're talking, if it wasn't for modern medicine, there would be way more deaths from those incidents than where we experience today. Something's changed in around the attitudes around the use of violence. Fifty-three road traffic fatalities, just as a counterpoint. A question that I get a lot is firearms. So we have seized, sorry, through forensics, we know that there are eighty-eight unique firearms. So we track ballistics, you know, after, when we cover shell casings, bullet heads, we almost, just think about fingerprinting, we fingerprint shell casings, et cetera. So from that work, we have identified eighty-eight unique firearms. Thirty-three of them are repeat weapons. We have recovered forty-two of them, including two last week. So that means that there are forty-eight that remain in circulation. And there may be others that have not been used, which we, you know, we don't see. But so I'm talking about what I can absolutely speak to from forensic evidence. And there is still evidence, strong evidence, that is a small number of firearms that are repeatedly used. In one of the Court Street incidents, there were previously thirteen firearms incidents connected to that firearm. Okay, I'm actually gonna stop there, because I'm conscious of the fact that we've been, it's been front-end loaded considerably. And I think moderator or just open up to questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So now we're at the part where you get to participate. And again, just so we flow smoothly, there's a mic on either side of the hall. If you wish to speak or for comment or ask a question of our panelists, please indicate by raising your hand, and one of our staff members will make sure that you got a mic. Remember, I reserve the right to moderate how we're talking tonight and the length of time that we're talking, given the hour of the night. I see, Mr. King, are you up to speak? So sir, next, after Mr. King. Thank you, sir.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Robert King. Thank you for listening to this panel tonight. It's an important topic that affects all of us in this community. If I'm correct, the officers from the UK, about a year and six months, they're about the police service?
So we're looking at an initial period of six months, right? And they are, the resources that I mentioned, with the exception of the boots-on-the-ground, are basically sort of consultants. So they're not employed in a current police force. They, in the UK, there's so much police work that's available. You've got sometimes retired, sometimes people who have moved out. So, but the initial, the initial period under consideration is six months.
The question I have is, understanding that we've tried over seventeen unsolved murders...
Forty-three.
Forty-three, so. And understanding that the police force is understaffed by approximately a hundred persons. And these are specialist officers, the likelihood of us having specialist officers slot into those positions for six months or after a year, based on the current projections, would be unrealistic. So the question I have is, wouldn't it make more sense to have these persons, these critical persons, here for two years or three years, understanding the importance of their roles and their particular area of expertise?
So I appreciate the logic of that thinking, absolutely. We're starting with an initial period of six months. There are very significant, very aggressive recruitment plans that are gonna come on board, that are gonna be both local and overseas recruiting. So I would imagine that by the end of the financial year, we're gonna get up to about four hundred and twenty officers. This is a question of capacity rather than capability. And I will make an assessment about where we are and the need to keep those officers beyond six months. and the need to keep those officers beyond six months, or, you know, 12 months or beyond.
The reason why I ask is, how many of you in this audience remember Operation Pink? That was a program that ran for approximately two years.
No, no, it was a couple of weeks.
Operation Pink was a couple of years?
Yeah, so basically, that was an undercover operation where we brought in, uh, I can't remember, it was, let's say, four DEA operatives, and they went around, um, doing control buys. The, the landscape during Operation Clean Scrape is an entirely different landscape today. First of all, um, we don't have quite the same amount of open-air drug distribution places. I can remember going to Art Mel's, getting a sandwich, get out of my car, and somebody walks up to me and says, hey, what do you want? Right, we're not in that, I'm not saying that doesn't happen, but we're in a slightly different space.
The reason why I was asking is not specific to that operation itself.
No, so, so it was, the operation was short, but it took a while to get all those cases through to court. That's what took a while.
Well, I'm glad you have me arguing in the right direction. My other hope is that, if you understand that traffic stops to take guns and mags off the street, that is part of the recruitment process until we get to the magic number that we need, that we'll perhaps get some traffic from UK and other jurisdictions, close to the forces so that you guys can do the important work that you do to get the support that you need. Say the word, this is something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. King. Someone from over there? Uh, I'll recognize, yes, the buzz-tron.
Just, um, thank you. If I'm just coming on, one of the follow-ups from Mr. King. As well as the investigators, and obviously, that's a known, known issue in terms of being able to investigate. The criminal justice system does not work if you stop the capability at the investigations. The investigations rely on evidence. Some of that will be forensic, and more capability by people and equipment can help gather that. But ultimately, the key things, if you want people brought to justice, including on these 43 cold cases, will be people in the community who know something and today have not, for various reasons, been willing to speak up and say what they know in a court of law, and be able to then give the prosecutors the ability to prosecute these individuals and bring people to justice for these historic crimes. And no matter how many investigators you throw at it, if people do not talk to those investigators, you will still end up in the same problem. So there is an issue on how do you encourage people to stand up and give evidence? I mean, the commissioner talked about intelligence. That intelligence is useful, it gives you leads, but you can't use it in a court of law. But how do you make people, or encourage people to stand up and give testimony in a court? And there are understandable reasons why people are reticent to do that. They may be in fear of the repercussions of them and their loved ones if they do that. One of the things we talked about in the Governor's Council is what else can be done to better protect those witnesses. And there are precedents around the Caribbean and elsewhere on mechanisms, judicially-controlled mechanisms, to allow people to get evidence in ways that better protect their identities. And those are the types of things that need be explored. But I just want to, you know, point out, you cannot police your way out of this. There is, you can take yourself so far, but ultimately, those who see something and know something have to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to see, I recognize your brother in the blue suit.
Sorry, just before, just before that question, when it, just, uh, the, um, His Excellency's point. Um, so in the, um, murder involving Miss Miners, we have about five statements from the community. So at quarter to five, on Court Street, broad daylight, only, and it may be six now, like, because the last time I checked, but it's, the number is extremely low. There were a lot of people present on that day, and we need your assistance.
Thank you. My name is Lamont Woods, I'm here on Channel 82. And I came here today specifically to endorse a program, a program that was in place in 2003 to 2008. But before I do that, I just want to ask this audience. If this neighbor's a...
We need, we need some conch shells in there.
Yeah, yeah. But what I also want to ask, um, put your hand in this area where you're taking out. He won. One hand, and she's gone. Who's I see? Can I be a young boy? Now, if people put their hands up in here, no one of us is safe. If you heard this music, you will understand why it's getting so violent. So how many people are here to go on YouTube tonight and look up drill rap music? And I'm not saying it's the ultimate cause, but I'm telling you right now, if you're listening to this all day long, telling you to kill your brother, you're probably going to kill your brother, okay? Now, let me move on. The reason I'm here today is to talk about the program, so I'm not going to get sidetracked. Um, there was a program that can restore the identity for our young black folks. They're sensitive about identity, also their love to self, and also their responsibility to the community. There is already a curriculum developed by a scholar, white hair, and burmudian. Now, like I said, this program was a start in 2003 to 2008, and it was removed because of monetary concerns. But when tragedy happens, it seems that money can be found. Very easy. But when it comes to programs sometimes that are good and that are doing good, they keep funding. Now, the history says to the commissioner, to the governor, and to the minister, that there is a petition online that has 9,662 certified signatures. And these are people who want to see this A-shay program reinstated in the schools. It was very exceptional, but it wasn't fine. As you will see in the upcoming piece, they will speak to students who benefit the program, they will speak to teachers who were involved in the program, and they will speak to a principal who took the risk to put it in our school. And I'm here today, and personally, I don't want to go in front of the camera, I don't want to be behind the camera, but I feel so passionately about this topic that I have to come out tonight dressed in my finest suit.
And it looks, it looks cool.
Because that's when black men are taken seriously, right? So that's why I'm here tonight. So I wanted to ask everyone, if they can, is to, um, vote and sign the petition. If you go on Chinese, any of our social media accounts, you will see a post there, and you will see a QR code that lets you sign on. Now, I don't want to take up all the time, because this is not my show, but I just want to end by saying that for you, now is the time. Revelations happen when there's a lot of crap. And right now is time for us to do something. But I'm telling you right now, this has to be charged. And what we see in this room right now is the quiet. This program goes directly to the young black folks. And some may say that you're talking black men. But I just saw the newspaper, was it Monday, Monday or Tuesday? Every single person I saw on that page was black. So I don't want anyone to say that this is being racist. No, it's not. What we do is recognizing where the issue is, and it goes to the issue, goes to the young people in all of the world.
Thank you very much, man. Before you sit down, just to confirm, the program was called the A-shay Program? That's the one you talk, thank you very much. Thank you, bro. Uh, yes. The A-shay Program. The A-shay. Uh, who, who next would like to speak? The gentleman there, yes, we'll come back to you, ma'am. You can say, you'll see, we'll pass you the, um, mic, but we'll take somebody over in this side, on the eastern side. Yes, sir.
My name is Dwyane Adams.
Yeah.
I'm here specifically for a reason. That reason is to convey a certain amount of information tonight. And I'm going to start by, first of all, saying that every one of us are guilty of being a product of our environment. All we become a product of our environment through learned behavior. Learned behavior is changed by the society that raises us. Now, I'm going to do one for my statement, and this is towards the commissioner. And I don't need you to answer this to the commissioner, because I already have the answers. I've heard you mention that when you see a young man in the streets wearing $30,000, $40,000 rupiah, you arrest him, you take it from him, and then you pressure him as to where it came from. What I'd like to do is, when the information was conveyed to the public about your brother, he earned $44 million in 2023, you arrest him, and that's where this money came from? Because you bargained on it, and that's not what he's been paying, that's all he's earned. Yeah, this is all to do with the young life. Everything perpetuates to what the result of it in the future. They do what they learn. I'm going to move on. Again, I said for a specific reason. I also named the one, the commissioner, and here it goes, okay? To disturb the commissioner, and notice apply, not notice apply, but to cease and desist. The commissioner allowed this to occur in his personal system to make the appointment at the Atlanta hour, backed up. Okay, I'm saying that to say this. The reason why we're here for this, for that, for the same reason. The people we have the conditions to follow on the farm, they're not doing their job. We got the chance to do it. And so I'm taking this opportunity tonight to put every last one of them on notice in this country to cease and desist. And should they decide to go on into another arrogant rule, allow them to go on, they will face the consequences of their reaction as an equal or an option reaction.
Thank you very much, Dwight. Um, Dwyane, young lady in the purple hat. You don't have to sit.
Good evening, the hostess. I believe that a part of the issue we see with our young people is they do not know who they are.
Amen, amen.
If you don't know who you are, you can do anything. So Lamont mentioned the A-shay Program. It's a culturally relevant program that teaches the history that we have inadequately taught for, forever. You ask black people of certain age or younger, they're not learning about their history. That has a direct impact on the behavior of young people. Because they have no idea of the genius that has been deposited in them, especially if they're listening to rap music or playing video games in the night. So how does the A-shay Program help? If you talk to young people that I taught many years ago now who are adults, they will tell you, they will say, where is the A-shay Program? But we're going to, we're going to work on that in terms of having a public presentation of that. But I want to share, before I say objectives, that young people learn in this program. I am valuable and have genes. If you know that about yourself, you won't get involved in certain kinds of behaviors. Now, folks have said, well, doesn't school, this, you know, school teaches to the test and the subject matter. It don't teach character, education. Second principle. My history and culture are sources of knowledge with lessons to be learned. So you teach young people critical thinking in the process of examining those lessons. Third one, I must develop my character to be successful in life. And the fourth one, the world is waiting for me to contribute my gifts and talents. All young people need to know that. And if you don't learn that in some manner, then you become a person who's adrift and alienated. In fact, this idea of being alienated speaks to the idea that their history and culture is not taught in school. They do not see themselves in their curriculums. Therefore, they become alienated in the society of their birth. So that's what we need to do.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for your poignant comments. But, um, since we're talking about history, indulge me. We're talking about history, not knowing who we are. But would you, would you agree or disagree that Bermudian history, Bermudians don't even know their own history? I'll be teaching these young boys and young ladies who we are as Bermudians. Indulge me for a minute. Um, a few years ago, somebody approached me doing a project on St. David's. And this lady came to me to tell me that she actually taught Bermuda history in our schools. And I started to talk about how I was a direct descendant of the black people who were forcibly removed from Takistan. This lady who taught Bermuda history in our schools had never heard of the displacement of black people in 1921 from Takistan. So what's the question that begs? How could we be teaching Bermuda history and the teacher had never heard of that significant juncture in our Bermudian history? So I agree with you. These young boys and young girls need to know who they are and from whom they have sprung, the generations of people of their forebears. I'll entertain somebody, yes, sir. Oh, no, sorry, this young lady that's been standing? My brother will come to you afterwards. Okay, gee, I'm sorry, gee, my brother, let's get the young lady that will come back to you. Oh, I didn't know there was a line forming. The instruction was, when men seated, hold up your hands so I could see. All right, all right, my brother, we'll come, we'll come over there. Let's entertain this young lady over here.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to follow up on the point that has been on me about the topic of our environment. And everything that arose at her tonight is very good to justice. And I do agree that we, we do need these programs. But I think something that could be even a bigger impact for not only gang violence, but also the tackle suicides in our community is giving these children an outreach program. Because I remember growing up that the church was the outreach program, and we don't need to have those anymore. And there's a lot of buildings that could be repurposed if the community centers an outreach program for these young people that do not have a stable environment or have someone that they can reach out to. And that's why a lot of these kids are heading down the possible straights because of death, lack of outreach.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We'll go to Gee.
Brilliant, brilliant, everyone, good thing. Yeah, and thank you, Commissioner, Minister, and Governor, for coming out and having this event. I have mixed feelings about the person here tonight, Governor. I will be met one other occasion. And generally, the government's role in this country is symbolic. We like to pay pride in the fact that we govern ourselves. Even though we have a representative from his majesty's kingdom here. You being here tonight means that, right, our government has lost its handle on the community, it's also very challenging. Not only has our government lost its handle, we as a people have to take this from the top. But we have lost our handle on our own citizens. Now, as it relates to the police service, the police service is a reactionary force. Everyone knows that prevention is far better than cure. The police service was not designed to prevent. It was designed to respond. It is not even the police's responsibility. And we didn't come here tonight to hear statistics. And we didn't come here tonight to hear about our problem in the street. Because if all those things were working, we wouldn't be here tonight. All of us can remember times where we had a lot more peace and stability in this country. And it happened with both cameras, right, with both licensed police detectives, right, with all this technology that we're now finding ourselves needing one. Because as a community, we fail. Now, we have to, as a working parent, to look in the mirror and take responsibility for what happened. But obviously, our police service and our government need assistance. Now, what we continue to hear is that we want the community to be involved. I think it's different. I'm a part of a team that has sent these kind of whole lives in the community. Ever since I returned to Bermuda in nineteen ninety-five, I've been deeply involved in community activity. My partners that have been involved in the community since the seventies. If you go on our website, imperialgroup.org, look at all the work that we have done in the community and judges by it. We've met with the government many times and been cast aside. We, that people come to us and ask us, like, "Why aren't you meeting with the government?" The government doesn't meet with us. We've met with the commissioner and put forward solutions. We just asked for endorsements. We get to receive it. We have a lot of programs that we run successfully and programs that the steel engage with now. But who's really listening? Not the leadership. My good grandma being said, in this country, right, what we've become accustomed to doing is punishing success and rewarding failure. What's it, what's it mean by that? Rewarding failure. I remember as a young boy, my early twenties, developing the first football academy in Bermuda. And the government body, rather than supporting the initiative that was having a huge impact on young black males, decided that they weren't going to sanction us because they saw our program as a threat to what they were doing. I remember when people were paragons from the United in two thousand and nine. And we met them, the government, the opposition, all the churches, right? We took them to the prison, and we met with all the gang members in the street. They all loved it. People were pouring out of the houses in the streets, ever for revenge. As a follow-up to that visit, one of Elijah Muhammad's sons moved back to Bermuda to meet with the premier today to engage in a program to address the same thing we're here talking about tonight. This was two thousand and nine. The premier gave him fifteen minutes. He was ejected. He didn't even know what to say or think. Because he's thinking that this government is pro-black and about its people. But in that meeting, he saw very clearly that that wasn't the case. This is what I mean by rewarding, right, failure and punishing success. We have a history of success and we have been punished for it. Another thing.
Gee, gee, my brother.
Hold on, hold on, this is important.
I know, I, I live here now.
What I'm learning about these forums.
There are, man.
Let me, no, no, hold on. These forums, right, actually make no difference unless you disrupt them. So I apologize for having to be the one to disrupt this. Because in the absence of this, we're gonna make speeches for ourselves, and everybody's gonna leave, and the reality in the streets can stay the same. Now, tell me if you disagree with that. Because people, listening to these forums, over and over again, they say the same things and nothing changes. So we have to do something different, clearly. Now, we developed an apprenticeship program because you had youths in Ton who couldn't leave Ton because of the violence. We had tradespeople. We went to the government of the day, we got a facility, the Rondabow Cottage. We got a fifty thousand dollar grant. These tradespeople are gonna work with these young people and teach them trades so they have game for employment and they develop skills. We all know the importance of having skills. Unfortunately, the government changed. The current government came in, they revoked the grant, and they knocked the building down. Why? Because we are involved. Because obviously, we're a threat to this society for doing so much good in the community. Now, we had an MOU with the Ministry of Public Safety in two thousand and ten.
Um, Eugene, my brother, my brother, I've been very, I have been very indulgent. There is a long line, my brother, you have my rapt attention and everyone else's. But to be fair to others, hold on, Jeanie. Heard it, man. There's, there's a long line of people behind you, my brother, and you've made your points.
Have I made my point?
I've been very indulgent, brah.
So, all right.
So now, for, for you, man.
So the government's gonna meet with us now?
Would you like to bring it to a close, your final comment? Jean, come on, all right, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna switch back.
No, no, that's fine. See, 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 no, 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 hold on.
Jean, come on, man.
I'm making my final comment.
Your final comment?
Yeah, this, this is a perfect example.
Everyone else wants to have a voice too, my brother.
All right, but no problem.
There are other people who want to speak, ma'am.
Well, that's fine.
For real?
That's fine.
Uh, I'm just gonna switch across the room.
Yeah, no problem.
Because there's another line forming.
This is exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir, you have, you have the floor.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. And my brother, I were in a little hurry, I would have listened to you talk all night. I'm not in no hurry. Now, first of all, I wanna, I'm not even gonna need to say my name because it's not important. But I need to say this. Born and raised in Chicago. I'm telling you all for a reason. I said this many years ago. The enemy just spoke to my people in Chicago, "You know why Trump's got all this, police officers in the army there?" Because we're pulling out of the cooperation, we're coming from under the Queen because the United States is still the monarchy. Now, I'm telling you, born and raised on the streets of Chicago, learn and, and watch them come after that part of the world because we're special. That's not the real Jerusalem, when it's ruled over, you don't get caught up, that's another conversation. But I'm gonna tell you what I know about this demon. Fifteen years ago, probably longer, I went to a New Testament Church of God. One of my brothers, Clarky Monas, took me to honor because he knew how I grew up, right? He knew how I grew up, and I told him the story. And I told everybody to honor, it was police officers there, it was other politicians there on New Testament Church of God too, right? And this is after Sunday got killed. Now, I'm gonna say something to you. When he died, I took the, I, I felt guilty, you know why? Because every time I went to Chicago for the summer, I should tell everybody, "I can't wait to get back Bermuda." Because I'm gonna have to deal with all this shooting and killing and all that there. You see what I mean? And coming from Chicago, the love of Bermudians, you just call me any guys, know me, saved me. When I came here, I was fighting every day. But to have my neighbor, what I saw in Bermuda was the world of God in existence. Love your neighbor like you love yourself. Straight up. Straight up, that's what I saw, and they saved me. At first, I ran up on my brother Cory Smith, rest in peace. First time I met with this host, he weren't hurt. The mama said, "Chill, eh, it's not hurt, but you great." So me coming from Chicago, I'm thinking, "Hey, this is a good room to try and get this." Because now I'm gonna see what I'm, the environment, Chicago environment, it, it produced me, right? And the people guilty of that is the same scumbags that's running it now. They have all these smoke screens, and they tell you to do something, but it's their hand behind it. The gang situation came from Jagger Hoover's current program. They use it to divide us and to break up Jeffwood, the Bloods, the Crips, the, the disciples, all stations like the Black Panthers to help the right? But like I say, I, to that church on there.
Bring, bring it to a close, bring, bring it to a close, my brother.
Let me finish talking.
Finished, yeah.
A minute. So anyway, I told him back then, demon is a serious demon. It's god-entitied. So something, I'm, are you, especially you, governor? Because you, the monarchy, oh, so much reparations, there's so much. This whole game plan, and, and so I'm saying, I'm saying this because it's a on these streets, and I know my back, I saw started coming to Bermuda and are trying to take the island. Seventeen young men on that team, most of them my godsons. You know what that means? How the island of Bermuda can keep our bloodline reproducing, they're killing doing, right? And they are right behind it, they're seeing it. What they're doing, they open up your borders, there's so many foreign, they're mixing their blood. And reach you, you're my brethren, I grew up with you. Have you met Chuck Webster? Have you met Chuck's neighborhood? Lots of selling drugs, parts of, he says, people from other countries. And he said he spoke to, by his courage, come out his house. And, and I grew up with you, I played ball, you taught me. And now you're sitting with the enemy because I'm gonna teach you something for nothing. Your people are worried.
My brother, all right, thank you. No, no, you, you, you want me to pass it?
Nation, any nation divided with four
Thank, thank. Hold, hold it, brah, hold, let's keep the respect, you know. Hold it, brah. Take, please, brah, please take a seat. Take a seat, brah. Who, who's next over, over here on this side? To you, right?
Good evening, sir. Be respectful, good evening, um.
Be respectful, man, but we're asking you to be respectful, brah, yeah? You had your turn, brah. You know what, brah?
Hello? Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, ma'am.
I, um, um, yeah, because I feel it. Okay, hi, um, to the panel up there, this, um, I'm a mother of a murder victim that was dead twenty-six times. I'm a mother of my son with twenty-six times, okay? The thing is this, they hung bars and tackling as case mates. They done twenty years to life. He done his time. Now, the, the, what is it, the director or prosecutor grandson that killed my son, okay, says my blood, pleaded guilty on the spot. That then the director or prosecution gives a sentence, twenty to twenty-five years. The appeal judge comes behind and wants to get him down to twelve years. And the thing is this, how could someone like that do Chris Van Buck, uh, people that's up Vastak now during time, getting just as much time. And on his twelve years, he's gonna end up getting a third hole. And this was in, that means in three years' time, I will see my on the street. I want to know how him anger, man. On, number two, I need, he needs to meet me either in Galesale somewhere because he's gonna meet me on the, and that same is gonna trigger him again. We failed, failed, uh, and I'm sorry you all, our black community, young boys. The DNA is, they have a rotten DNA, they need to get a spiritual DNA, DNA. Okay? And, um, like I said, we need to, the, we need to, the lawmakers of this country, this island, needs to go back to the books and look over some of those things that, of why we have so much violence today. And these smack on their wrist because you're not doing your twenty, twenty-five years like Chesterfield Johnson and, and tackling to the, um, of somewhere behind the bill. Very, as a mother, I think it's very unfair to the sentences that after these prosecutions or sits to study this, and they're not gonna have some appeal judge come in and turn it down the way they would like to. I think it's totally wrong, and I'm and the law this island to get it together and have a meeting and look over this books, thank you.
Thank you very much. My brother, we'll take this one on this side next, and then back over this.
Good evening, family. And I say family because the acronym for family is forget about me, I love you, and I love my community country. Thank you for the panelists and thank you for, I'm just gonna draw big points. My name is Ken Matthew, I'm a chancellor, Department of Corrections, I worked in other areas. And this forum tonight is about solutions. This, but solutions. If I could give solutions, I suggest respectful to the panelists. I'm gonna show you some articles, and these were all published by me. In May two thousand and four, getting off a drug SAP, because we have a drug community, and you better believe it, that festers crime. Needing a Bermuda solution. And this two thousand and six, Royal Gazette Bermuda Sun, read them, great articles. An expert speaks on drugs in Bermuda, forget the Chamber of Commerce, right, on the drug situation and the crime in Bermuda. Two thousand and six. In two thousand and eight, I took twenty-five thousand dollars of my own money and tried to open up a server because of gun violence and viol down the pipe, I explained it. Sure, it was turned down because people were paranoid in their community. So the Nelson Bascom and Teo Deal sat in this house, a three thousand, I was paying a month, and they're not gonna go for it. And that was a shame. We bought it on our and I'm not here to blame anyone. This book right here, it says man's word. Not disrespecting any lady in here, it says man's word. How to Stop the Violence That Tears Our Lives Apart. Something very simple that I believe out of chapter out of this book. And this speaks to what's happening in our community. Has been to jail and been out of jail. As we leave the prisons, checking certificate after message. I think about the tremendous amount of money we are spending on new prisons and how little their support violence and violence prevention. To stop many, you must lobby and take and organize to get the money appropriate for the prevention works, prevention programs that are needed. These men need to be met at the gates with jobs, low-cost housing, healthcare programs, parenting programs, and relationship classes, counseling and retraining programs, reeducation programs, training programs, mentoring them. Now, I gotta give men and Mr. Bean some credit. And I'm gonna tell you why. Because they're putting money into programs that young men, right now, I have four young men that these guys are helping to go to my program as well as up to Bermuda College. These are young men that's not gonna be on the street. We need to do more of that and stop criticizing and start being more of a parent, more of a mentor, more of a role model. We used to have so many retraining programs and so many times, so many times, we used to have apprenticeship programs where we had more apprentices, and someone over there spoke about it, they was on the right track. We need to get back to that. Good evening, family. And I say family because the acronym for family is forget about me, I love you and I love my community. country. Thank you for the panelists and thank you for I ' m just going to draw big points. My name is Ken Matthew. I ' m a scholar. The Department of Corrections, I worked in other areas. And this forum tonight is about solutions. Or solutions. If I could give solutions, I suggest respectful to the panelists. I ' m going to show you some articles. And these were all part Royal Gazette by me. In May two thousand and four, getting off a drug S A P because we have a drug community and you better believe it, that festers crime. Needing a Bermuda solution. And this two thousand and six Royal Gazette Bermuda Sun. Read them. Great articles. An expert speaks on drugs in Bermuda. Spoke at the Chamber of Commerce, right, on the drug situation and the crime in B two thousand and six. In two thousand and eight, I took twenty five thousand dollars of my own money and tried to open up a server because of gun violence and violence down the pipe. I explained it Sure, it was turned down because people were parents in their community. So be it. Nelson Bascom and Teo Deal sat in this house, our three thousand I was paying a month and bit, they ' re not going to go for it. And that was a shame. We bought it on our side. And I ' m not here to blame anyone. This book right here, it says, Man ' s Word. Not disrespecting any lady in here, it says, Man ' s Word. How to Stop the Violence That Tears Our Lives Apart. Something very simple that I believe out of chapter eight, out of this book. And this speaks to what ' s happening in our community. has been to jail and been out of jail. As we leave the prisons, checking the gate after message. I think about the tremendous amount of money we are spending on new prisons and how little their support violence and violence prevention. To stop men, you must lobby and take and organize to get the money appropriate for the prevention works, prevention programs that are needed. These men need to be met at the gates with jobs, low cost housing, healthcare programs, parenting programs, and relationship classes, counseling, and retraining programs, re- education programs, training programs, mentoring them. Now, I got to give men and Mister Bean some credit. And I ' m gonna tell you why. Because they ' re putting money into programs that young men, right now, I have four young men that these guys are helping to go to my program as well as up to Bermuda College. These are young men that ' s not going to be on the street. We need to do more of that and stop criticizing and start being more of a parent, more of a mentor, more of a role model. We used to have so many retraining programs and so many times. So many times, we used to have apprenticeship programs where we had more apprentices and someone over there spoke about it, they was on the right track. We need to get back to that because we need to talk to our young people and stop talking at our young people. We need to start communicating with them, hear what their fears and their thoughts and their ideas and their aspirations are. And if we don ' t do that, we ' re lost because that ' s our generation coming up behind us. They have a very, very serious job. Some of us can ' t do their job. So let ' s not criticize their job unless we ' re going to help them at their job. Some of us are not doing our job. So why do you want to sit back and criticize them for doing what they are doing? We need to employ them to do even more. I ' m not I ' m not going to stay on any longer, Commissioner. But I want to say this. We need to put more, more opportunities out there for our young folk. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, my brother. Thank you very much, my brother. And again, in the spirit of respectfulness, when somebody is speaking, please show some respect. We ' re going to go back to the other side to the people who have been waiting quite a while on the line over there.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for showing up tonight. It really means a lot. It really, your 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 presence tonight means a lot. My name is Gina and I am the founder and I am an advanced grief recovery specialist. I stand here tonight as someone who has lost quite a few family members to gun violence. What I really want to do tonight is to talk about solutions because there are programs that are having impact, are having great outcomes and are changing lives. And so I want to share that with you tonight. But I want to start by asking everybody from this front row to their pillar in the back to stand up for me, please. On this side, on this side of the aisle, on this side. And the reason why I ' m asking you to stand up is because you represent the hundred and twelve children in this country who have been left behind from gun violence. You represent them. A hundred and twelve children. Yes, we want to talk about the gangs and yes, we want to talk about the guns, but who ' s saving the children, who ' s helping the children. I ' m not talking about the teenagers, our youngest clients are newborns. Some of them were in their mother ' s wombs when their fathers got shot. Our oldest client is in his thirties and he has been with us his whole life. And so you can have a seat ' cause I wanted Bermuda to take a look at how many children are left behind. This is for no other reason, a hundred and twelve reasons why we need to do something different. Tonight, I want to share some data with you. Our program is called Champions. Why is it called Champions? Because the parents of these children said, my children are victims of crime, but they will not become Bermuda ' s next statistic. That ' s why it ' s called Champions. We go out in the middle of the night and I want to thank the commissioner of police and I want to thank the minister weeks and the governor, because while you ' re all sleeping, we ' re sitting at the feet of these children. We ' re helping to tell them in a therapeutic way what has happened. We ' re helping to prepare them to view a body of their father. We ' re helping them to go to court. We ' re helping them years after when the court case shows up and they ' re just trying to get on their feet. That ' s what we do. And I don ' t say that to brag because I paid a price for this. A big price. And so tonight I want to encourage you. We can all point fingers. We can all blame. But if you had no police department, what would Bermuda really look like? What would what would it look like? If we had no Minister of National Security when I first started this thing, that didn ' t exist. There was no such thing as a Minister of National Security. Why am I saying all this? Because we have very short memories. Ninety eight percent of our children, the hundred and twelve that you just looked at, are graduating from our public schools. Ninety eight percent. Ninety eight. Ninety one percent of these children are in what we call pro activities. What ' s the opposite to pro activity? Antisocial, gun banging, tattooed out, pants hanging on, our kids are not doing that. Why? Because our program is culturally sensitive. It ' s not cookie cutter and we ain ' t going nowhere. Nowhere. Cause we ' re seeing the outcomes, we ' re putting in the work, we have credentialed, certified people, master degree, certified in grief, because if we ' re gonna call this thing what it is, we have to call it. We cannot counsel our children generically because it ' s homicide that they ' re dealing with. We cannot act like these children are not going to look in the paper at some point. Natural natural, your natural response is I want to know who killed my daddy. Anybody ' s going to want to know that. That ' s just human nature. But we get to them and we say, listen, here ' s some grief support. Here ' s how you deal with your anger. Here ' s how you deal with your 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 revenge. But it ' s done in a therapeutic way for children. The hundred and twelve children in this country, we are privileged to sit in their grief space. It ' s a privilege. They don ' t have to let us come in. And no, they don ' t trust everybody. They don ' t trust government. They don ' t trust police. A lot of people they don ' t trust. So how can you help somebody if they don ' t trust you? Why do they trust us? One, I ' m a woman of faith. My word is my bond. If I say I ' m going to show up two o ' clock in the morning, I will be there. If I tell you I ' m going to be at the funeral, I will be there. If I tell you I ' m going to be there a year later when the court case shows up, I will be there. They ' re looking for consistency. They ' re looking for honesty. They ' re looking for compassion. And we don ' t have all the answers, but you can ' t deny what we do here. You cannot take that from us. And all I ' m asking, Minister, Police Commissioner, and I thank you, sir, because his officers are the ones that call us out of our bed, because they do police work. Police do police work, medical people do medical work. But what happens when these families are grappling paying ten thousand dollars for a funeral? Who ' s got ten thousand dollars laid up? Very few working class people. What happens when they need grief, counseling, they ' re either uninsured or they have no insurance. We don ' t charge them a dime. I thank international business. I thank Mr. and Miss Bermuda because that ' s where our real money comes from. We don ' t get the big grants. But that ' s all right. I serve a God who ' s able to do more than I can ask, think, or even imagine. So I ' m saying to you tonight, Bermuda, there are programs that are working. We have children who are thriving in spite of this crazy thing that has happened to them. And I ' m here to tell you tonight, we need your money if you can give some, because anybody at the master degree needs to be paid proper. Right? You got to pay these people what they worth. We need a a space to house our team. I would like to see grief as one of the pillars of the national strategy. I really want because when we when it all ends, it is grief as a root problem. And on address grief, that ' s a whole nother root. But everyone good on there tonight. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the opportunity and God bless you.
Thank you very much, Gina. I know you appreciate my indulgence. We ' re going to switch course of room to Mister Fox, who ' s been standing there quite a long time. Sir?
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. Yeah, good evening. Um, okay, I ' ve got a solution. A lot of you might not, can you hear me? Okay. I have a solution that a lot of you might not like. I used to be a correctional officer for twenty seven years, sergeant officer, fifteen years. Um, before I said that, Mister Weeks, my brother, last damn fan. Um, I hear you one day on the television, radio saying you ' re going to put up, thinking about putting up drones. I ' m gonna tell you like Nike, just do it. When the the sun visors, the black ones, they ' re going to cancel them. Do it. I ride a bike. I have a clear sun visor. If sun gets in my eye, I put my shades on. So just do it. Don ' t tell us what you ' re thinking about, dude. Do it, brother. Now, my suggestion is, and I spoke to you, Mr. Weeks and the Attorney General, I say reopen case mates. Some of you might not like it. I worked up case, I worked up case mates in nineteen seventy three when we had criminals. Bobby Green, he rests, rest in peace. However, no, no, you can all laugh, but there was some, at the earliest, you can all laugh, but I ' m telling you, as the earliest inmate I never see come out in the inmate population. And we had man run any prisons, man. And guess what? He stayed in that cell twenty, twenty- one hours, hour for breakfast, hour for lunch, and hour for supper. He done about five years like that. You heard it because he had a lot of control. Now, I say open case mates, we took eight hundred thousand dollars and invested in in a studio, the money vanished. The money will be here. Case mates right now. You need um electricians, you need plumbers, the the um welders can weld up the reinforcement or put in the windows, then you get life. Twenty- five years you do case mates. Twenty- five years, right? No television, no radio, take a Bible and some books. Guess what? Guess what? You got you got uh, you need to paint it up, you got life to paint it up. Right? And minister, the governor, the commissioner, Mr. Lam usey, former commissioner of prisons, right? So you know what what it is up our case mates, and guess what? Far as I ' m concerned, no water views, look at the walls. I remember many years up there, I had a threat, my whole body was drenched, no no shade. So what I ' m saying is this is a different old town. You want a solution, put them up there. Now, um, I also would like to see former former assistant commissioner of impairment, former sergeant Navodaro. I like to see him on one of your committees, possibly heading your committee. Let me tell you about among those guys and a few others. Costco, your crackle is there, box, your focus there. But when those guys went out, and you can attest to some of the guys, when they went out to look for somebody, they went right in the heart of the community, Court Street, wherever, gambling dance, and tell you, I want Eddie Liam. Tell him if you don ' t show up, I ' m coming for
Now, you won ' t find me in a gambling den.
And that ' s okay. We all gamble. Sorry. And guess what? They people respected him. My man, parent, if you went down there, I want sense, I want Albert Fox. Guess what? I turned myself in. If not, he came and gripped me. That ' s it. Now, what I ' m saying is right now, I think there ' s a change and I think we need to open case mates. We need to open case mates and be money well spent. We ' ve put money, like someone said, comes, uh, we don ' t have no money. All of a sudden, it comes out. I ' m I ' m I ' m seeing something. Just I ' ll finish up. I ' m seeing so many programs that Mister Dean and the gentleman there had because I seen it in the corrections. We need to fund them and keep going. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Fox. We ' ll go across the room. Who ' s next in line? Mister Seymour? I recognize you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank the minister, Minister Weeks. I want to thank Governor, and I want to thank the Commissioner. Hello, can you hear me now? Okay. I want to thank the minister. I want to thank the Commissioner and I want to thank the the Governor for showing your presence, not just your presence, but for having this meeting tonight. It ' s very important that we continue to have these conversations. No matter what it may look like, we need to continue to have these conversations. And um, I also want to thank the uh, the officers that that do the hard work back there. I believe they uh deserve a round of applause this evening, when we put our hands together. But I won ' t be before you long. Uh, just a couple statements. You would indulge me. Um, for decades in the sixties or seventies, eighties, uh, young black men had a clear vision. Uh, and quite frankly, we almost had a common enemy, which was segregation. Uh, and we knew what our purpose was. We knew where we were headed. We knew the direction we were going. Uh, and the scripture says, without vision, the people perish. And uh, I really don ' t just want to make a statement, but ask a question. What is our vision as a people? Where are we going? Where are we aiming for? And at the present moment, I don ' t believe we have a vision as a people. Uh, and that is why we are perishing. I ' m going to draw a reference really quickly and then I ' ll be out of your your face. The Bible gives us a sobering example of Eli. He was a leader who failed to reprimand his two sons, Hophni and Phineas. They were evil individuals. And because of their wickedness and his father ' s silence, the prophet Samuel already told him what will happen. Your young man will die in the flower of their youth. And because leadership fails to correct our youth, an entire generation will continue to suffer. My mother was a nursery school teacher back in a time and I come from a time where in in primary school, they still used the ruler on me. Eh? And in the neighborhood, I was corrected and was able to be corrected by the neighborhood. Also, uh, my question is, what is our vision as a people? And what is the plan to restore that sense of purpose, pride and place in society for our young black men? Because if we continue without a vision, not only our young men will perish, but like Eli ' s house, our community will wither in its youth. And uh, I ' m directly affected because my first cousin was murdered, Jason Smith. And um, when you have a direct family member that was murdered, all types of evil thoughts enter your mind, you know, and it ' s it ' s only by the grace of God and the realization of who I am and where I came from, because I was ignorant from eighteen to twenty five, ignorant, as they say, Miss Minister Weeks, very ignorant. And it ' s not until I realized that I came from Jim Warwick, I came from these men that have laid the foundation before me. And I believe that the young man now in the schools, F U S A, Brother Lamb, they don ' t know who they are. And without the vision for these young men, they will continue to perish. So that ' s my statement. I just want to ask a question. What ' s the vision for our young man?
Okay. Thank you very much, my brother. We uh will switch of course the room to the young man. Uh oh, sorry, sorry. This John Manure. Sorry. He has had his hand up.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, brother.
Um, I ' ve got a question, Minister Weeks. Um, is there any plans to reduce the cost of living in Bermuda because it ' s killing us? And I think it ' s fueling crime as well, because kids cannot find jobs, kids cannot rent apartments that are so expensive, and then you wonder why they ' re going to Ghana. We, you know, we need to, we need to really address the cost of living because you mentioned the point, Mister Weeks, about parents, parents should watch over their kids, but how can they? After working three jobs. You know, we need to get to the root cause of this, and part of the root cause is the cost of living. It ' s causing mental stress, it ' s causing anxiety, it ' s causing fights. I ' ve been to ample job interviews, but I ' m offered like sixteen dollars an hour for a job, and I cannot live on that. So are there any plans to reduce the cost of living, to help people, to help parents so they can spend more time with their children?
Thank you for your questions, sir. Mister Weeks will take take the answer.
Hello. Thanks for that that last question. Um, there is a cost of living commission that is currently instituted by the Premier and Finance Minister, and I can ' t speak of the finances of that cost of living commission, but there is one that ' s actively looking at lowering the cost of living in Bermuda.
Thank you, Minister. Um, we ' ll recognize the young man in hat and we ' ll go back across to you afterwards. Now, I ' m conscious of the time and I ' ve been very indulgent tonight. Uh, we are trying to aim for an eight p. m. completion, but we ' ll see how the time goes. Over to you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, now, what I heard was that you was looking for a solution to the problem. But before you can find a solution, before you can have a solution, you gotta know what the problem is and where it came from. Now, just for Now, just for the purpose, I'm gonna share a little bit about who I was in the early eighties. You're gonna understand that I'm not gonna be disrespectful to no one in this house. But you're gonna understand where I came from, what I understand. And if you've never walked there yourself, you have no clue what you're talking about. You see, back in the eighties, I ran gangs in Bermuda. Yeah, I'm a small guy. But you know something about gang leaders? Is how stupid you are in the head that will make people follow you. I ran gangs from Forty Second Street to Curve and Avenue to Cedar Park. And my enemy wasn't my brother. My enemy wasn't the person that looked like me. You know, my enemy was to me and to them. And no disrespect to you, sir, at the end. But the same people that came and busted our houses because we were selling weed was the same people sitting up top of St. Monica's Street, next to the Seventh Day Adventist Church, buying weed, three forty-five in the morning, after swinging doors or after the tunnel or after you name the place in middle town where it stares open until the sun comes up. Thank you very much. The same officers that was busting our streets, our houses, was the same officers buying weed. Was the same officers buying cocaine. I'm just being one hundred fifty. My gangs sent the police packing because we is more violent than what the police department was willing to stand against. Now, let me tell you something. Four thirty this afternoon, I talked to two different arrows, generations of gang boys. One was in his late thirties, one was in his mid twenties, one had an ankle bracelet. I asked him, being that young gang warfare is different from when I had mine. What's the problem? The twenty-something year old said to me, he said, you'll never believe this, uncle. But the, the war that we are having right now, from east to west and anywhere in between, is over. Girlfriends, jealousy, and, and jokes that people couldn't take lightly, they took it personally. He said, the war between Peget, Dakyo, and St. George's started from four cousins. Four cousins in four different parishes. And it started because the joke rules were gonna throw eggs at one another. And that was funny, but somebody's feelings got hurt. So we decided to step it up and to look at YouTube videos on gang warfare. And now we're trying to kill one another. All of this, twenty-four-year-old, twenty-eight-year-old, because somebody's feelings got hurt. Because when I was coming along, we used to play a game called kickings and punches. And we took it lightly because that helped build us. That helped make us firm. I came from the nineteen seventy-one era, when respect was everything. Today, we don't have no respect. Not just the young people. The adults don't have no respect. I see sixty-three-year-olds with their pants sagging. Let me tell you something.
Let, let, when you're close, bro.
I, I will, right now. You want a solution? The gentleman said it a minute ago. Change that new party house you got up West Gate into a real prison, because in Colombia and Cuba, the parents are responsible for the food and water that the prisoners receive.
All right, thank you very much, bro. Thank you. Uh, I'll switch across the room. Thank you very much for your patience. I know you've been standing for a while. Thank you very much.
Good evening, folks, and to especially the guys up on the panel. My fellow porn dog, Mayor Weeks. I'm gonna take you back sixteen years. When was the last time the Queen came to Bermuda? Two thousand and nine. About three days before she came, nobody was shot. But there was just a few gunshots over the wall from Government House and Government Gate. Mister Jordan Veracca got on the news that night and said, hey, 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 forgot to do something about this. The Queen came and went. The next week, two people were shot. I sent the letter to the editor and said, where is Mister Jordan Veracca? Who was concerned about a few gunshots? But all of a sudden, he going fire. I got her driving a bus, seen this government envelope. It's not payroll, it's not tax, but I know it's government. I open up the envelope. It's a letter from Mister Jordan Veracca, from his secretary. He's, he said that Mister Veracca found my letter very interesting and would like to have a word with me. I was going, but not because I learned about Mister Jordan Veracca. It's just that I truly do not have, and you know, too much for the government law per se. But I said, no, I'm going up there. And we was talking, and we was talking, and we was talking. And Mister Veracca says to me about his constitutional responsibilities. I said, Mister Veracca, you're only three years older than me. I knew about my constitution before you. And I know that under my constitution, you, Mister Veracca, are responsible for the regiment, the police, and the courts. Mister Weeks, Mister David Burke cannot call Mister Simms in the office and say, look, yeah, this is what we're gonna do. See? Somebody brought it up earlier, right?
Sir, do you have a question or a point you've got to?
Let me finish. Somebody brought it up earlier, eh? What's the strangest thing about this, this, this two-patch thing with forty-three people on it? There's not one white person. I said to Mister Veracca in two thousand and nine, you don't find this strange? Out of two hundred and fifteen countries in the world, this is the only one that only people like me get shot. And oddly enough, since then, there has been two white boys. Stay up, but all of a sudden, that case is resolved. You want it, work out. And do one down in Devonshire Bay. See, Donald Trump would have you to believe that.
Is there, is there a point you got anything, sir?
Donald Trump would have you to believe that Chicago and Baltimore is the, it's a problem. Who shot Charlie Kirk?
Sorry, sorry.
Who shot, who shot the chachap the other day? You know why there are no white people on here? There is a ad on the news TV right now. Hey, man, I'm having problems moving to Bermuda. Father Shaf called me. Anybody in the world, if there was a man on the moon.
Sir, I'm gonna have to bring this to a close, my brother. Seriously, because.
Finish on this. If there was a man on the moon, he can apply for it.
Thank you very much, my brother. Peace and love to you. Sir, there's a line. Thank you very much. Mister Hollis, I recognize you, sir. Pray silence for.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Yeah, that's my voice. Uh, my name is Rudolph Hollis.
Probably gonna have to speak up, bro.
Yeah, my name is Rudolph Hollis. I am the Deputy Chair of Prison Fellowship. Most of you would not know who Prison Fellowship is, but Prison Fellowship was established in nineteen seventy-six by Johnson and Chuck Holson. The Bermuda Chapter was established in nineteen eighty-four. We are not a church, we are not a government organization, but we are a Christian-based organization. We have been going into the West Gate and the case mates prison for over forty years. And in most cases, we hear the stories of various inmates who are there for various crimes, murder, sexual assault, gang gangs, gang leaders. One thing, point that I wanna make is that you cannot assume that everybody that's incarcerated is guilty. I wanna support those people who have been charged and found guilty, but they're actually innocent. More importantly, what I wanna say is that we build the confidence and the trust of the people that we visit, especially through our mentorship program. And as a result of that, we hear their stories. And what's most important in a forum like this here, and I wouldn't want to speak their stories in a forum like this here, but their stories are no different from the stories of the people out there today doing the kind of violence that they're doing. So you have to get to know their stories in order to deal with the problem. We're dealing with the results, but do you really know the stories? So I take this opportunity to put Prison Fellowship forward as a tool to assist government in addressing this problem. We can help fix this problem. And the reason that I make this statement publicly, because in the fourteen years that I've been on behalf of Prison Fellowship, we have never been invited to sit with any of the government organizations to hear our views or opinions. And we're meeting with gang leaders, we're meeting with young people, all kinds of people. So I would offer Prison Fellowship, I have documentation if you like it, to say we are here as a tool to help you with your solution.
Thank you very much, my brother. And I want to personally thank you for the work that you and Prison Fellowship, I can personally attest that Prison Fellowship do a fantastic job behind the walls of our corruption facility. So thank you very much. I'm gonna switch across the room to Mr. Fabla.
Good evening, everyone. And let me just thank you for being out here tonight. Uh, when, when this meeting was called, I think we also need to thank the, um, the three panelists. Because that's why we're out here. They, I think it's the first time that, uh, the Commissioner, Governor, and, and Minister have been in a forum like this. But you can see, actually, you're gonna have to do this more often. I, I, that's my one suggestion. Two, what I'd like people to do, just stand just for one minute, just bear with me, brother. Everybody stand for one minute, please, and then we've been sitting all night. And, and, thank you, thank you. Uh, if we just pause quietly, and we, we've heard a lot of reflections about what our young people may or may not know about on whose shoulders they stand. We're here in this space tonight because there's a crisis in Bermuda. And we know from the term crisis, the, the Chinese interpretation of crisis, it both danger, but it also offers opportunity, also offers opportunity. The reality is, though, we all have a role to play. So in this crisis, by at a crossroads, we're all asked to see what we can do. You've heard some sharing tonight on behalf of a variety of people, and you know people in your neighborhoods in Iran that you could be working with, organizations, et cetera. And that's, we also know that if we work together, in other words, we, as social beings, we are asked to collaborate. But we have a tendency to compete with each other. That's what gangs are, to compete. We all have a little bit of gang in us, but let's get beyond the competition to working together. Thank you and good evening.
Congregation, maybe, see. Uh, thank you, Mr. Fabla. I'm gonna switch next door to the young man there. And then Shane, if you don't mind, you're the last one in the line there. I don't see anybody else over there. And then this gentleman here, he'll bring you the mic. All right, so the gentleman, no, I'm very conscious of the time, it's going eight. We will indulge three more speakers and then the young lady. So four, maybe four speakers before we leave. Yes, sir.
I was born out of Robert Vincent Maynard. I was born out of Robert Vincent Maynard. I became a black Muslim. My name was Alan Toux. I sat with Malcolm. I'm sat with Bob Boris, big marvels with him. He liked my sister Diane. Larry, Larry, I grew up with Larry. And my name is Namustha Parashyam. While I've learned about blackness, that a race of people cannot survive on blackness. You have to be human first. That's, that's, that's the idea. And what is a human being? Listen, you can't take the Quran, or Bible, or the Torah to a tree, to a bird, to a lizard, to the sun. You could only take it to a human being. Thou shall not steal. Who, you, you ever talk to a tree like that? Thou shall not kill. You ever talk to the birds? You could only take that to a human being who has given freedom of choice. And then, listen, majority of everything is happening, has happened amongst us. Thou shall not kill. The most people that kill is our own. The most people that steal is our own. We, we blame everybody else. One turn around and look at ourselves. How we treat, I, my mom was crying one morning. My brother and I got up, saw her crying. She was, she was the only one that brought us up. She'd had no food. We ran out, took purpose beds and stole all these doggone vegetables. Brought them back to the house, even had you sand in the roof and they sold all of it. What my momma said, don't have to worry about food no more. Come from the kitchen, had all these vegetables. My momma took a bow and cut our ass.
Yes, yes, you know, is.
Sir, sir, sir.
Gotta be a different way to say that.
I'm sorry, right, sir. I, I was walking in Hamilton. Some college kids dropped the wallet. I was a black woman, black Muslim, white man was the devil. Uh, some college white children dropped the wallet. I picked the wallet up, it was a thousand dollars in it. Did I say, oh, that old devil, he ain't getting this wallet? I called him. He came back to me, I said, thank you, you dropped your wallet. He said, do you want a reward? No. To be human is to be decent. It's to be honorable.
Thank you very much, sir.
Uh, this is to be human is to be decent and honorable. It's not the government's job to do that for you.
Yes.
You have to be it yourself.
Yes. Thank you very much. Salaam alaikum. Yes, yes, lady, ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the panel. My, um, question, I have one question and one statement. The statement, rather the question is for Minister Weeks. I did read the National Reduction, National Violence Reduction Strategy, oh, twenty-six pages. Rather not, I understood everything I was reading remains to be seen. It's up here. Oh, well, I did write a, a question. And, um, my question is that, my question, you see, in your foreword, you stated that, um, the strategy, I, I can't see this very well because I stretched it down real quick. The strategy was born out of a two-day consultative workshop. Um, where stakeholders, um, came together to brainstorm the issue of violence in our community. So what I want to know is that when, when did this two-day consultative meeting occur? When did it happen? When did, when was it decided that it had to be done? Minister Weeks?
Um, I had the two-day workshop the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of September, two thousand and twenty-three. When I became the Minister of National Security in April of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, I saw, I saw the destruction that all this gang violence was inflicting on our country. So rather than try to come up with the answers myself, I reached out to the stakeholders, inside government, outside, uh, organizations, activists, churches, sports clubs. I tried to get a, a good cross-section
Yes.
of, um, Bermudians, black and white, who was willing to, um, come together. of Bermudians, black and white, who was willing to come together and brainstorm for this two days. And I might add, before I put down the mic, not only was it P I L P, I even reached across the floor. I wanted everybody to be involved in that two-day workshop. And out of that, we came up with the National Violence Reduction Strategy.
Okay, thank you for that. Because after I did read that, I didn't really have any faith in it. Like I said, I may not have digested all of it. I don't understand it, some of it. But it's a collaborative effort to get the community at where it was before, if not where it was before at least, to continue with less violence. Because the scourge of violence is very debilitating and it affects all of us. And what Gina said, and I agree with her, is that the people that have been gunned down, murdered in any form, they do need counseling, the small ones. Because I have a little, I guess it's my great nephew. He says that I want to kill those people that killed my father. And he's just a child. And there are another one who cries at night. He said, I miss my brother. He said, and he says, there's bad man, I'm going to, you know, do something to that, to them. That's what these seven-and-a-half-year-old do, state. So what Gina said, yeah, counseling is important because retaliation is most likely greater. There's little children, but they grow up. They hear things. So I appreciate you, Minister Weeks, and your, that big effort to get the community to, to do what it has to do. Hopefully, we're going to cooperate, yeah. And my, my statement, the statement that I have now is for Governor Murdoch. I sent an email, perhaps you get a lot of emails, you may not have seen mine, because I did contact the Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office on September the third, because I said Bermuda needs help, please help, and if it's their policy to do that. I didn't get a response, so I called. And when I called, they said that they only conduct information back and forth through emails. So given that, I contacted Government House, and they said to write an email. And they gave me the email of Government House, and I did that. And I addressed you, Governor. And rather than that, you had seen my email. It's okay. I just thought I should mention it. That was my statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I'll switch rooms. If Shane, just bear with me for half a minute. The gentleman has been very patient right here. And we'll come back to you, Shane.
Good evening. I came kind of late. I just want to, first of all, thank the governor, the governor, the police commissioner, and the National Security Minister for being here. What is the purpose of this meeting tonight? It was sparked by a very disturbing murder that happened in our country. And I think that I'm eighty-five years of age, a former police officer. I want to say that, having the history of my policing has a goal, or all through the scene of a crime or court speed, as this governor did. It tells me a couple of things about him. Number one, he is generally concerned about his community. And number two, he certainly operates outside of the status quo, outside of the box per se. I heard somebody call my name earlier, so that's why I'm standing up. I think that the public needs to know that what we see happening in this country is not, we're not dealing with monsters, et cetera. We're dealing with our own people, our sons, daughters, and nieces and nephews, et cetera. I think it's important that, as we as a people, we have to be able to communicate with each other in a respectful manner. And the objective, I think, is for us to draw our nerve to each other as a people, as a community. And I want to thank the people who decided to have this meeting tonight. This is a step in that direction. So I take my hat off to the organizers. Like I said before, in the history of Bermuda, you've never seen a governor come out on the streets. So it tells me something about him. I have personally spoken to the governor, as well as the police commissioner, about the elections. And I want to let the community know that it's not as bad as we think it is, as it appears to be, right? We have, we are a very, I guess, resolute people. We know to come together. And my condolences, my condolences go out to all those who have lost family members through violence, et cetera. So we need to communicate more with each other as a people and get back to our communities, as they once were. It's not outside of our reach. We have to reach each other and communicate with each other. And we all have a personal responsibility. I've spoken directly to the police commissioner, as well as the governor. And that wasn't made public because it was a confidential meeting. And the reason I spoke to them, because I am generally concerned about what I see happening in our community. And I'm making an attempt to have a positive impact on it. But we need all hands on deck. And I want to thank you.
Thank you very much, Skipper Darrow. Shane, Mr. Paul, thank you very much, Mr. Darrow.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shane Paul, artistic director for Bermuda Squad Entertainers and secretary of Boulevard Community Club. I just want to say, on the solution side, I've heard everybody talk about the prisons, case mates, grief, grief management, and different things of the nature. I just want to say, we need to pour money on the grassroots. Grassroots, grassroots, grassroots. I sat in that meeting, for the two-day meeting, ma'am, and I was there pouring for the grassroots side with Gina Spence and other people. And yet, I have yet to see it be so much funds poured on the grassroots as you are now going to pour a lot of funds on the aggressive side of things. I just want to say, as you are going to do that, knowing that you have to do that, please, don't forget about the grassroots side of people that really do things, that don't get the recognition, that really, really can get to these children and understand. Hold on one second, before anybody clap, I don't even need a clap. Just so that they understand that they are needed, that they are worth something. That's what it's about.
Mr. Paul, not to cut you off, but I invite you to share with the audience what the Ministry of National Security is doing for Boulevard Blazers.
Yes, they're doing something wonderful for Boulevard Blazers by helping the youths of the community to feel better. And you know, our side of the community is a little bit more affected as others, but the Hill Island's affected. So they have poured funds in to help with lighting, getting the lighting system, organizing Boulevard Community Club, and also a container trainer facility that's going to make the youths of the community feel a lot more loved, welcomed, and honored. We have to honor our youth. If we don't honor our youth, they're going to go wild. I have two sons, so I can attest to it. You pour into your kids, and you have to, everybody, not just your kids, take a kid, put it under, put him under your belt, and pour into him. Try to understand him.
Thank you very much, Shane.
Kids, you just need understanding. They don't understand. If you don't understand these young children, you're going to be lost, very lost. You're never going to understand them if you don't get down to the level and understand.
Well, on that note, let me say, say it to you and all the Boulevard Community Club, to thank you for the tireless efforts you guys invest in your community. You guys should be proud of what you do. I certainly am. Let me just switch across the room to the young lady at the mic.
Okay, good evening. Hi, I'll make this quick. I just want to state the obvious, there's not a lot of white people here. And we all need to care about this because this is not just a black issue, it is a Bermuda issue. As Bermudians, as non-Bermudians, as people who live here, as people who love this community, we should all care. And we should support the grassroots, we should support the nonprofits like the Gina Spence Program, like the Open Your Heart Foundation, like the Family Forum, Family Center, like the Coalition, like every single grassroots organization that is doing work to help support the youth, help make positive changes in this world, and also organizations like Curb, that's especially for white people, to understand racism in Bermuda and why we got to where we are now.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I'm going to switch back over here to the young man.
Good evening, people. My name is Fitzie.
Good evening, Fitzie.
But I'm, the first thing I want to say is, I'm heard a lot of stuff, and without any disrespect, a lot of it didn't make no sense to me, right? Because what we need is solution. Solution means that we need to be serious, all of us. Every layer has one of us. And if we're in this room because we're scared and we're not looking for a solution, we shouldn't be here. You understand what I'm saying? Because solution means that we have to get on and get on deep. You don't beg two of these guys for sixteen, seventeen, no. You gotta catch them at six, seven, and eight. Because you don't know what that little boy's going through, right? Why not just go do this to say, oh, what's happening in Bermuda? No, we need to do something. We knew we had to do something a long time ago. This didn't happen yesterday. These things should have been addressed years ago. But what's happened now, yes, everybody's scared. Mostly people in this room is freaking scared. Don't worry about them, they're worrying about the children. I'm heard more about everybody else and how they feel and start up about these kids. So if we're going to get real, get real, because nobody's got time to waste. People are losing their lives. So whether it knocks someone, one of you olds do it, it's a problem. But whether it knocks on your neighbors, it's okay because you're safe. If we're going to get real, get real. Lift that, have a good night.
Thank you, Fitzie. Is there someone, yes, the young lady on the side?
Thank you. I'm the young lady. I'll take that. Good evening, everyone. I've sat here from the very beginning of this, and I appreciate all of the conversation that's been happening. I appreciate the programs, I appreciate the panel and the responsibility that you bear. A gentleman came up here a few moments ago to say, what is the vision? What is the vision for young men, young black men? I've been listening, I've been listening for someone to say this. Jesus is the solution, that's all. He said in His word, this. If my people, and this is for the remnant in this audience, this is for the people who dare to say that they believe that Christ is the risen Lord. This is for you. If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face, then will I hear from heaven. And then I will heal your land. That's the number one thing that has to happen, and it starts here. So respectfully, you do not have the vision for people. You cannot. You're not, you're not the father of, you're not the creator. The solution is simple. Turn yourselves back to God. He has all of the answers. You will speak. Bermudians have lost their identity, and that's the truth. We catch everything that is going on in the Caribbean, winding and grinding ourselves, and bacchanal, and all kinds of things that were never here before. We've tuned into gangster rap, we have turned ourselves into, can't even describe who we are. Who are we as a people? The solution and the, and the identity is found in what the Word of God says. How much you are loved, how much you are cared for, Jesus died for you, start there.
Amen, sister. Thank you very much.
Amen and amen.
Now, we're winding down. I think you have two over there, and we'll take one last one over there. So here we go.
Good evening. So, good evening, everyone. I've come here tonight with a heavy heart, was determined to not speak. I've heard some great, I mean, not solutions, actually. I feel like I've heard people's great opinions. Some people have their own agendas. I look around the room. He who feels it knows it. I look around the room and I see mothers who have lost their sons, who have lost their brothers, their nephews, grandchildren. When you have to, even those who have businesses that have been affected by it, when you have to go and literally see your child who has passed away, or you've gone into a situation where you see the body there, and then you have to clean it up. What is the solution? I sat there. In my opinion, the ones that are living it have the solution. A gentleman came up to this mic in the midst of everything, became as vulnerable as he could be. He stood here and told you he started gangs. He stood here and told you that he had an influence on what we are living through today. Not putting aside anything that the different speakers and the different programs that are being offered, we need them. Certainly, we need them for our children. But in the, in the, as, as we're doing that, we cannot forgive, forget those who are also living it. They're not too far gone, you know. We may think so, but some of these young men are salvageable as well. So how do we, I was, I was, I was taken back there after that young gentleman spoke, that we didn't even just stop the meeting and say, how can we help you? What, he has the connection with everybody. And there are others, I'm here to tell you, there are others who have the inroad, the connections with some of these young men, to be able to hold them and just look in their eyes and tell them you love them. It's amazing what love can do. I'm telling you, because I've seen it, I've felt it, I know. I have two young men. My sons are young. My daughter's young. Who do our women choose as husbands? You know, so I say to the young man, right, I say to my government, to my police officers, to my members of the community, even my brothers from all over the island. You have a gentleman who has the inroad, he has the connections, he's told you. It's over simply nothing, nothing. But he's already got the ear of those young gentlemen. So why not work with him and find some other gentleman who these young men can trust? And then these young men can grow their, grow trust in, and they can mentor them out of this thing. Because until our young, if they're eight, and we, yes, they'll succeed at eighteen maybe, but in that next ten years, we're still dealing with the problem if we don't deal with the ones that are doing the antisocial behavior. So I thank you, sir, for being vulnerable in front of your people. I ask you to also forgive us because I think we just dismissed what you said. And what you said, I heard. So even after this meeting, there are some of us who may know some of the others that you may not know, right? There are mothers that know. There are mothers in here that are looking for solutions. I feel sorry for some of the mothers. They have heard nothing. And fathers, I'm sorry, mothers and fathers in here, who, I don't know how they even feel, because like, solutions. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you very much. And finally, our last speaker from the western side.
Kitty, apparently I don't do public speaking. But my brother was gone down July first, twenty twenty-two, in Flat Village. I believe that the solution is, just piggybacking off of what the lady said, you just talk to them. That's all you have to do, is just talk to them. I've spoken to my brother's circle, what would you call a circle? When they do get jobs, they get looked on because of the area they came from. So their bosses, the coworkers, everybody picks on them. So what they're going to do, quit. And like she said, they have the solution to the problem. That's all, they just need love. Or they can get a job because of the fact that they can pass the drug test. So what I'm going to do, go sell a five-dollar beer, I'm going to go sell a ten-dollar beer. My money's going to flip faster. Thank you Pastor Bean, he does an awesome job. People looked on or Pastor Bean, Pastor Bean has helped my brother and numerous of his friends through certain things. So I believe, yes, the government can do more. But the solution is in them. Everybody doesn't, I'm not dismissing the stabbing, but I'm going to focus on the gun violence. Can the mother stand up, please, if you're here? If you're here, Mama, Crystal, I don't know who else is here, that's laugh. We are tired. You wake up every morning, not every morning, but you wake up any mornings where it's gonna shooting, PTSD kicks in. You're already fighting the demons of losing your loved one. You still know, you scroll through, broke that, Tianan, whoever else. Bermuda Police Service, now you have to fight that demon, because PT, the other demon, because it's like, okay, now we're not, the family's going through it. And it's not a nice feeling. Bermuda's gotta be stop contradicting each other. When it happens, ew, serves him right, he was a gangbanger. Ew, he did this, he robbed people, did it because your name's in the paper. Or you know of somebody's uncle's, cousin's, aunt's, whatever, son, you know what he was into, so serves him right. But people don't realize that these bullets don't have nobody's shoe size, name, family, R is nothing, it could hit anybody's doorstep. Any minute it hits, so, okay, yes, we're suffering through it. We heard the comments. It's not easy, but then, when it hits their doorstep, after they're looked at you somewhere because your brother, your son, your whoever got shot down, no, you're like, it serves you right, blah, blah, blah. But then, when it hits their doorstep and they wanna pass you, ew, I don't know how you guys do it, you're so strong. Ruin your energy, when it happened to my family. But the real solution is talking to these gentlemen. They just need love, they need understanding. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And finally, Ms. Williams. And there's one last person in the back after Ms. Williams, and then we'll bring it to a close. Oh, no, there's, sorry. Okay, we'll return to you. Yes, ma'am?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening to the panel. My name is Esme Williams, and I had no intention of coming up here to say anything tonight. I arrived late because of another meeting engagement that I had. But what I would like, my first thing I want to say, and the lady just said it in the Scripture verse, it all comes down to love. It all comes down to love. I want everyone in this audience to repeat this. It all comes down to love. Okay? And that's what has to happen. And with love, you're not disrespectful. We have to respect one another. And, you know, instead of coming out, and it's been addressed before, we're looking for what's gonna, I thank the minister for organizing this, and whomever his team was. I thank the governor for being here, because you know what? They said we wanted a solution. The premier said, we need help. He went to a constitution that's there that says the governor can do something in terms of getting people here to help with the situation. We don't decrie, and this governor I can speak to, because I followed him and what he has done, and his involvement in every community, every bit, and we need to applaud him for doing that. He has been here for us. And then the other thing I'd like to say is that we need to come to not, when we have forums like this, you know when all this happens? Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say my part, and I don't care, I'm just gonna say it. And, you know, if we disrespect one another, we get our little, whatever we on our agendas, and that's what we do. But we need to come, minister, we need another one, another session of this, because we're gonna grow in what we do. This is the first one, we need another one to come together, and then we grow, we mature, we learn how to bring solutions, we learn what is necessary to do. You're gonna hear more people offer solutions, and that's what's needed now. And we're about that, and that's where we're going, and that's what we're gonna do. And I, my God said, because the other lady took my scripture, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face," that means every single one of us have to seek the Lord for ourselves, and bring the Lord, bring this country to what the Lord, Lord, we need help, we need your guidance. Show us, give our leaders, give the premier, give the ministers, give everyone involved what they need to do, show them, that's what we need to do. "If my people, who are called," and you're the people, no excuses. We're not here to bring excuses or blame somebody else.
Thank you very much, Sister Williams.
That's, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Sister Williams. Go with Mr. Bean, it looks like Mr. Bean, and then there's the lady behind, and that will be it for tonight. Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening to the panel, and good evening to everyone who's attended. I'm echoing the same thing that the lady over there, but in the South African approach is Truth and Consequence, Truth and Reconciliation Committee that was done back in the time that South Africa had apartheid situation. We're looking to do more of this type of stuff here in Bermuda, and do it with meaning, so that we can progress our community back to what it once was. And this forum is about solutions. I have for the panel, work that I've been doing since 2021, that I'd like to offer to members of the panel.
Thank you very much, sir. And then, our final, I see somebody leaving over there, okay, you, I promise you.
Good evening.
Of course, I'm getting a flag in the other way. Ma'am, go to her.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, panel. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. Beneath this. Okay, my name is Nicole Fox, I am a redeemed child of God. Let me start there. I haven't always been perfect, the perfect mother, no, the perfect child, no, the perfect human being, no. And I would like to see any perfect people in there. Don't think so. I'm coming just to speak on behalf of mothers. We make a lot of mistakes raising our kids. I think we didn't have a book that said, this is what you do. So a lot of people say, yes, it starts from the home. But we have a lot of mothers that done right by their kids in the home, and still went backward. I have had enough of people talking and blaming mothers. If we are the problem, then help us to find a solution, help heal us, and show us what we are doing wrong. Help us. Because we are always gonna be the producer of the world. We are mothers, we produce, we are the generational givers. We are also the generational curse breakers. We are also the ones that break the most when we have to look at our child dead. None of you gentlemen can feel what we are feeling. So I'm speaking on behalf of all mothers. Don't beat yourself up. If you need help, ask for it. Don't ever feel afraid or let society bring you down and think, and pray, and let you feel you are useless in raising your children. Because without us, there is no solution. You need us, because we feel it the most. We don't understand it, we was not prepared for it. But imagine looking at your child dead, not from a bike accident, not from sickness or illness, an intentional murder. And you expect us to go on and live our lives like nothing happened, because you can feel it. I can't hurt, you're accountable for something that you don't feel. A lady mentioned it earlier, who feels it, nurses. If you are looking for solutions, look at us. Give us a voice, instead of just turning a blind eye or blaming us. Give the mothers a voice, a chance to help. Because you cannot fix what you have not felt. I would say it again, you cannot fix what you have not felt. We feel it, we know where we went wrong. So we try to change it, we try to do it this way, a little different, and we may still get it wrong. But we are here trying to survive in a toxic world that constantly overlooks us and blames Community blames the mama. Everybody says, look at the house, look at the household, look at the household, look at here, it starts from the house. Many streets have a stronger hurt than your children, on your children than you do. It's my fault. We, as mothers, we don't always get it right. But until you look at us and actually help us with our trauma, because our trauma trickles down. So I'm gonna go, what you do? If I'm not healed in my household, my children are never gonna be healed. Okay? My trauma as a mother trickles down, and it trickles down to generational, because I haven't been healed. So while we are all trying to figure out what to do, if we're not healing, if the mothers are not healing, then we're constantly building a generation of trauma.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
So we need to be healed, we need to be looked at, and we need to be heard. That's on behalf of every mother.
Thank you very much.
That has looked down on a slayer for their child. Thank you.
And our final, final speaker tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, panel. I am asking for help in our neighborhood in Pembroke. I am asking the ministers, I am asking the government to get involved in Pembroke. Why is Pembroke the most troubled area? I honestly think that Pembroke happens to be a hub for business for those of the elite and the rest. Why are we using children to do our things for us? Any streets, why aren't they asleep at six o'clock in the morning? Why can't I get some answers? Then I ask, are the cameras working? You got several cameras on the pool, but you see nothing. But I could stay in my house and take pictures of these, about any street at 3:00 AM, and they know when you're coming. You put on your alarms, they see you coming, and as soon as you go around the corner, they go hide. Soon as you leave, they're back in the street. From 3:00 to 5:00, they know when you're coming. In any neighborhood, I bet you they know when you're coming. Why are you asking their neighbors all the time what you see, what you see, what you see? We know what we see. We try to help, we try to give information, but you don't give us any. They can rob us every night, and every night if they want to. I have pictures on my phone, but you know what they say? There's nothing we could do, because we don't necessarily take fingerprints in Pembroke. So they know. And they sit, and they wait. And another thing is, I'm asking you, please, don't wait for the next meeting. These young men cannot go to work because of the girls that are involved, because of the jealousy, like this young man said earlier, and they wait for them, and they pray for them, and they get off of work. They don't even necessarily wait for them. They punch on them any, all any day, on their jobs. So I know that you have your programs in place, I'm letting you know that our young black males are not safe on the job. I thought it was one that I heard about, that I knew personally. I'm talking to a lot of other young black males, they said it's grim. It's grim. So everybody knows a little bit about what's going on, besides you all. And I'm asking for some answers, I'm asking for help.
Thank you very much. In the interest of time, yes, my brother, I recognize, one last speaker. I'll give you 60 seconds, my brother.
Okay, concerning support for helping, a girl taught me in the school, teenager, they need supporting a group at school, because some children, some colleagues bullying the girls. Those people who bind them together make a small gang at school, and they will be the future gangs if we don't correct their behavior at school. I think good cooperation between the police and the school, and to talk with the children about the crimes which happens, how to avoid them, and what are the consequences, and how such things are very dangerous, to make them aware about the severity of the situation, and to be careful such children. Concerning the one who asked, how can we help mothers? We can help mothers by securing the father for the child before carrying the child. Because most of those criminals come from broken families, from single mothers, children who don't know who is the father, who don't know the value of their own life, and they don't know the value of the life of others. How when we correct that situation, we can help put an end to for the gangs and such criminalities. A man came to me and said to me, I became a father when I was 15 years old. How can we stop such things? We need to address such problems during the gangs.
Thank you very much, my brother. Points well taken. So as we come to a close, let me once again thank you for your attendance here this evening, for your participation, and on behalf of His Excellency, the Minister, and the Commissioner of Police, we thank you for your input and your contribution and your attention tonight. Going forward, we may replicate this up in some in the Western End, as well as down on the Eastern End, in order to give the entire country a voice and an ear in some cases. Thank you very much. Travel safely and blessings. Yeah, one more, please, sir.
Everyone is leaving. I want you all to remember that violence thrives in silence.
Violence thrives in silence. Peace and love to everyone.